Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Democratic Primary for the seat for City Council East. I'm happy to welcome you all tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We never endorse candidates or parties, but we are happy to have these candidates here with us tonight so that our voters can be informed voters. This forum is being recorded and a link will be sent to all attendees or all who registered and we'll also post it on the League's YouTube channel within a couple of days. So encourage your friends who may live in the East District to view it there if they're not here tonight. So at this point, I would like to introduce our host for our moderator for tonight. Judge Karen Morris is going to be moderating our forum. And so I'm going to turn my camera off and hand it over to you, Karen.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody. So I'm going to go over a few rules and introduce the candidates. So the League of Women Voters has prepared questions to ask the candidates, but we'd like to get questions from you all as well. If you have any that you'd like both candidates to answer, please put them in the Q and A that you'll find on the bottom of the screen. All questions will be asked of both candidates. And now it's time to meet the candidates in the order that they will be speaking, which the first will be in alphabetical order. So let me introduce you first to Paul Conroy, candidate for City Council East District Democratic for the Democratic Party Primary. And second is Mary Lupien. Mary is also a candidate Democratic Party Primary City Council East District. Our timekeeper this evening, I will also introduce, and that's Constance Flahive. She will hold up cards, hello Constance, to let the candidates know how much time they have left when their time is and when their time is up. You'll see her hold up a yellow card, that's 30 seconds, and a red card, that means the time is up. The candidate can then complete their sentence. If they go longer, I will give them a gentle reminder. The first candidate to answer a question has one and a half minutes to do so. The second has one minute, and I will rotate throughout the evening the questions. And now it's time for the candidates' opening statements. Each candidate has one minute. And I'll ask Paul Conroy to please unmute yourself and begin your opening statement.
Thank you, and I thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'm very excited to run for City Council. I've lived in Rochester my whole life. I've lived in North Wynton Village my whole life. I've been a teacher at East High School for 22 years. And 10 years ago, something happened that really was the start of this run. I received a half million dollar grant from the State Department of Education to build an optics lab. I teach kids to machine glass to make lenses for cameras and telescopes, things like that. It's a $3 billion a year industry in Rochester. And in the last five years, I've been able to connect more than 30 of my students with full-time work at jobs like Bausch and Lomb, Corning, L3 Harris. And what I've learned as a science teacher and being this kind of a technology teacher is that the youth of Rochester have a lot of talent. And connecting them to opportunities really allows them to take a great trajectory forward. And what I've seen and done at East High School, interacting with companies, the human resource departments, they know that the students that I send have done well. And so in the spring, companies come to me and ask, Mr. Conroy, who is graduating this year? And what I want to bring to City Council is the collaborative, the collaborative spirit that I have, both with students, educators, and people in business. And I want to make sure that the city of Rochester thrives for everybody, not just young adults. I want everybody in the city to have a shot at opportunity.
Thank you. Then it's Paul Conroy. My apologies. I think I mispronounced. And now Mary Lupien for opening statement.
Hi, it's really great to be here today, and I thank everybody for showing up. So I'm Vice President, Mary Lupien. I'm also a social emotional teacher at School 28. And from that perspective, I really have a front row seat to the magnitude of the crisis that a youth are facing. And it's very critical that we put all of our energy and resources towards addressing their most critical and urgent needs. Throughout my time in office, my focus has been on expanding our public safety options to ensure that we're getting the right option, the right response at the right time, that our neighbors have access to safe quality of affordable housing, and that we are addressing the most critical and urgent needs of our youth and their families. And my term began in January of 2020, right before the world fell apart. And our city has been through so much, but in times of crisis, we are forced to reevaluate the way we do things. And I've been a strong and courageous voice on council, challenging the status quo and advocating for policies that directly impact our residents. I spearheaded efforts to rethink how we provide public safety and mental health support. And by connecting and collaborating with other cities, we successfully established the person in crisis response team and the Revolutionary Violence Prevention Program known as Advanced Peace. And these initiatives have been highly successful, but they need more investment to move the needle. And I'm looking forward to answering your questions and sharing ideas and how we are going to lift up our youth and families and build a better Rochester.
Great, thank you both. And now the first question, we'll start with Mary Lupien. Lupien, is that great? Say it once more.
Lupien.
Lupien, thank you. Here is the question. What do you view as the most important issue for the City Council to address in the coming year?
The most critical and urgent needs of our youth. And it's not one issue, right? All of these issues are interconnected. You know, I have a, I have a fourth grader right now who's already been in the back of a cop car twice. And when I ask him why he was out 12:30 at night with older boys, he says, well, grandma was working. So then we have to ask, well, why is grandma working an overnight shift and looking after her grandson? And, you know, she's, she's trying to pay for housing to not get evicted. And what did, what was his family life like? There's so many needs that our youth are presenting and I am frustrated with how we've spent so much money on downtown. That money is not going to reach our, our kids. And so I think that the most important thing we are going to need to do is really reevaluate where we're putting our priorities and, you know, our, our city budget is next month, I encourage everyone to, to take a look at it. It's more readable now than ever to see how we are spending our money and how you might like to see us spend our money.
Right, and Paul?
Yeah, I think workforce development is the key to unlocking the potential and I know that there are hundreds of unfilled jobs, not just in optics, paychecks, Wegmans, electrical work. Every industry is struggling to fill their workforce. And part of what goes into workforce development, especially for Rochesterians, is transportation. And many jobs are making, city residents are almost disqualified because they don't have the means to get to their, to those jobs because they may not have a car. And until they have a good job, they can't pay for the car. So it's kind of a, it's a vicious catch-22 cycle. So I think that what Rochester City Council needs to focus on is effective ways to reach out. And young adults, especially young parents, heads of household, that are struggling and grandparents, they may be working, but they're not working at a good enough paying job to support their families.
Thank you. And now, Paul, your first, the next question goes to you. Interactions between people with mental health issues and the police are a concern across the country. Do you think the Rochester Police Department provides officers with the proper framework to recognize that a person they encounter has a mental issue, and if so, how to deal with it?
No, I, I think across the country, the way in which police are trained is, is focused more so on reactions and responses to crime. And the dimension, when, when mental health is added to the mix of any crime or any domestic disturbance, I, I don't, I don't know of any particular example in this country where the training is up to par. And it's very hard to, to develop the tools and the, the personnel. Is it necessarily every police officer's responsibility to have the same kind of mental health training to respond to those types of instances? I think what we really need to look at is how can we effectively train police officers, social workers, and mental health professionals, really? Because that is such an issue that it's a smaller slice of the population with an outsized impact. And I think the training for police needs to kind of follow that. Even though it's a smaller percentage of the population, a bigger slice of their training ought to revolve around these mental health emergencies and crises.
Mary?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the question really is, why are police responding to mental health emergencies? I think it's important that they have a basic level of understanding, like a mental health first aid training and de-escalation training, understanding how our brains react under, you know, those kinds of dire circumstances, both, you know, for the people that they're dealing, dealing with, but also their own reactions. But it's important that we are differentiating our responses. You know, it's like having a toolbox of tools, but always using the hammer. That's not what police are really, you know, that's not what they signed up to do. And so right now, I'm leading a project where we are doing a 911 analysis where we're looking at the calls to see what types of calls are coming in. You know, because we have a big bucket called family trouble, and family trouble could be domestic violence, but it also could be a kid whose mom doesn't know how to get them to go to school. You know, so once we know what we're really dealing with, then we can start to talk about what kind of responders are best suited to respond to those calls. Because I think, I think the goal is that we're getting police out of the picture as much as possible for these calls that are nonviolent and not criminal. But really, these are, you know, public health issues that we're dealing with, and we need to use the right tool.
Thank you. Here's a question from the audience while we're on police. Will you state your and explain your position on the police accountability board? So Mary, you start.
Sure, I 100% believe that we need a police accountability board. Any system that is not held accountable is open to abuse, and the police are the only ones who don't really have that system of accountability. It, it's hard to, you know, to have them police themselves. The police accountability board has definitely had its struggles, and it's something that this, this model that we're using and the way that we're kind of shoehorning it into government hasn't been done before. And organizations normally have this kind of stage of forming, storming, norming, and then performing. And so we've definitely had a lot of the forming and the storming. But the current executive director and the chair of the board are very competent, and I've been very impressed with their performance. We recently had a presentation to City Council where, you know, we really understood the direction that they're going in. They're hearing their first case this month, which we've been all waiting for. And their biggest hurdle right now is getting the the information that they're requesting from the police department. They expected a 24-hour turnaround time, and they're going on 50 days for some of these cases, but they have 167 in the pipeline. And I really have a lot of hope. But I will say, you know, if, if we're not really seeing the performance that we expect next time around in the next budget season, I think it's going to be a lot harder to make the case for the current format of the PAB.
Great, and Paul?
Yeah, well, I know the stated mission of the police accountability board is to bring accountability and transparency to the RPD, and I think everybody wants that. But the effectiveness of, of this $5 million investment, I, I really want the board, I want to feel like the board itself is transparent and accountable. And I'm not sure how that $5 million has been spent and what future budgets are looking like. And I think this is where it becomes important in a city council position to be budget focused. And you have to look at, at, at the results and say, we've invested $5 million. What do we get out? Where else can we invest? And how much more or less should we invest in this accountability board in the interim?
Thank you. We're going to move to housing. Both the lead question and a question from the audience deals with housing. So there was a concern about rising costs of rent. The question, what ideas do you have for the creation of housing for those who cannot afford so-called affordable housing? And we start with Paul.
So that's a two-part answer. There are certainly people who are working at jobs that their, their wages do not allow them to afford housing. And I think it's the role of government to subsidize people who are putting in 40-hour weeks. You know, the city does not have the authority to raise minimum wage. And it's, it's not, it's not always fair that the, the wages for certain people's work. However, I do know that there are, I mean, go back to this broken record of there are hundreds of unfilled jobs, and I've connected, for example, a high school student of mine who graduated two years ago. He's working in an optics company, and he's working 48 hours a week. And he's, you know, going to clear probably more than $60,000. And so it's part of the answer to affordable housing is connecting people to jobs like the one I have that allows them to afford housing. And I always say to people, I want for everyone what I want for my own children. And the types of jobs that I would try to connect people to through City Council would be jobs that I would only be willing to connect my own children to. And we all want our families to, you know, our young adults to stick around in Rochester and want to raise their families here. And good-paying jobs and affordable housing are two key pieces of that puzzle.
Yeah, so the, the city has kind of clung to this, we don't have a housing crisis, we have a wage crisis. And I think that that is really a false narrative because wages will always find, fall behind rents. When wages increase, rents increase. I think there's a number of things that we need to do on the local level. We actually do have the ability to set a local minimum wage, which other cities have done. But we need more housing that is affordable to people who make 30% to 50% of the area median income, which is set at the county level. So deeply affordable housing, tenant protections. Right now, you can be a great tenant, pay your rent, and at the end of your lease, your landlord can kick you out for no reason. And that's being used to wholesale changeover communities so that the landlords can get higher rent, and that is contributing to the displacement that we're seeing due to gentification. But there's also more kind of innovative ideas, like community land trusts, accessory dwelling units, and co-op housing that make housing more affordable.
A follow-up question here, a question from the audience has to do with landlords, the role of the landlords in all this, and what value do they bring to the housing market? Or might they bring to the housing market? Mary?
So what value do landlords bring to the housing market? I mean, they're, they're providing housing right now, but I think ideally, we'd like all of our folks to own their homes if they'd like so, like to. But it's important that we are holding landlords accountable for the quality of their housing, which we need to do a much better job at the, at the city level. And find, you know, we can't pass Good Cause on the local level, and it hasn't passed at the state level, but whatever tenant protections that we can enact to ensure that tenants have the right to buy their homes if the landlord sell, you know, puts it up for sale, the right to have legal representation at their eviction proceedings. Whatever power that we can give the renters is going to be important because, you know, the landlords, again, they own the properties, but they have, they have all of the power, and most of them do not live in our city. And so we need to empower our city residents who are renting.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so landlords have the right to buy property, and it is definitely, it's the city's responsibility to make sure that landlords are keeping up with their properties. And the vast majority of renters and the vast majority of landlords are good actors, and everybody's trying to move ahead in life. We definitely need to have rules in place to protect both landlords and tenants. And I think the biggest problem that we're dealing with, and this isn't new, this is not a Rochester problem, this is an American problem, where cities and its residents are facing this escalating cost for rent and escalating cost for houses. The house that I bought 22 years ago has quadrupled in price, and most of that jump occurred in the last 10 years. And so I think there's a lot of fine points that this needs to be really well thought out in how we address this.
Okay, thank you. Here is one somewhat related. The neighborhoods which were redlined by lenders in the 1930s remain blighted and starved of investments. What should the city do to foster well-being in the residents of these neighborhoods? Paul?
So it's a very sad history between banking and real estate and how we've treated our fellow Americans based on the color of their skin color. And it's, it has led to generational poverty, is something that we are all familiar with, what that phrase means. And I, I think it is it's a critical responsibility that, yes, that while we're investing in downtown, of course, every city wants to keep investment, and we want to have a thriving and bustling city center. But we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We've got to reverse the balance of, of, of the results of this redlining. And, and I think it is, it's, I think it's what I would call it, an equitable distribution of resources. If there are especially disadvantaged communities, and one of the places where I'd invest most is in the schools, and I would try to have neighborhood schools, regardless of whether you're from a community of great wealth or a community of poverty. There are children who are great. And we have to nurture those children wherever they may be. And if we can have schools and businesses around those schools as centerpieces of pride, the kids that I teach, I don't care what zip code they come from. I want them to feel proud about where they go home, where they, the table that they eat dinner around. And I want that pride to be equitably funded by the city of government, by the city of Rochester.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, unfortunately, those same practices, you know, are still largely at play. We still have banks, JP Morgan Chase, for example. Our, our local Genesee Valley Co-op Credit Union makes more mortgages in the city than JP Morgan Chase. We, the, the best way to invest in our neighborhoods is to invest in our neighborhoods. The hundreds of millions of dollars that we're dumping downtown in, in infrastructure between the Blue Cross Arena, the Convention Center, the Aqueduct Project, the Library Terrace, what that money could have done and could still do in our neighborhoods would, would be huge. It does, a lot of the programs that we have that are making a real difference, they need a lot of investment. It doesn't take much. So much of what we need to do is based on relationships. And it's not very costly to build relationships and, and connect people to resources. You know, I agree that community schools would be great, but the city council has no bearing over the school district whatsoever.
Thank you. This is a question from one of the attendees. You speak about investment of jobs. How have you supported unions, and how will you do so in the future? Mary?
Yeah, I come from a long line of union folks, my grandparents, my parents. My mom was a, a union rep in her local SEIU and her hospital. Unions are a critical way in which we can build the, the, the general generational wealth of families. Good jobs providing into retirement. You know, I, right now, fighting for our ASME employees. It's 1,000 of our city workers, 70% of them, who live in the city, mostly black and brown, our lowest-paid workers. The police have gotten a, a retention bonus for those who worked March of 2020 to March of 2022. The firefighters got 2,000 per employee, and our ASME workers have gotten none. But I successfully got that up to 2,000 for our ASME employees that were full-time. But I'm going to continue to fight for the full four because all of their lives were put at risk. They didn't get to stay home during the pandemic. They were out there handing out our food, staffing our learning labs, picking up our garbage, staffing our 911 centers. And they deserve that recognition as, as much as the police do.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so I would suggest that any union that is looking to bring on apprentices that have open positions, that, that should be an especially easy connection where the city of Rochester, the government of Rochester develops workforce pipelines. And I know there are existing workforce development agencies, but we're just, we're not making those connections quick enough. When kids finish high school, when they're 18 years old, they, if they don't go to college where they have RAs and RDs and deans of, you know, social life, they, they kind of lose the support system of schools. And I think it ought to be the business of the city of government to collaborate with unions and any company that maybe has, that has unfilled positions. And we ought to find a way to connect those city residents, especially to union jobs, they're going to be there 40 years from now, and give them a shot at a career. And as an RTA member, I'm a, a big backer of teachers as unions and, and other union members.
Next question, thank you. This one also from the audience. What is your position on the city's complete streets policy? Paul?
The complete streets policy? I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, thank you. Mary, can you comment?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm in, I'm in full support. I'm very much a proponent of creating the environment that is more friendly to people. And, you know, we are going into a future that is not going to be as car-centric as the city and most cities have been in the last 70 years. And so, you know, creating streets that are more narrow to slow down the traffic, putting in traffic. And I'm looking at my window, and we, we have that on Parcells Ave, you know, creating intersections that are, are more tight so cars can't go as quickly around the intersections. Love roundabouts, and making sure that our biking infrastructure is protected and safe.
Thank you. A related question. The filling in of the inner loop was a once-in-a-generation chance to undo the mistakes of urban renewal in Rochester. What lessons do you take from the first half of the project to inform the remaining portion? Mary?
Unfortunately, I have gotten Unfortunately, I have gotten the feeling that this is urban renewal, part two, but this time in the name of equity. You know, the, the eastern side, you know, we, we did put in affordable housing towers and, you know, they did, they tried to put an effort into building and affordability. But across the street, the ambassador, which provided affordable housing is now being turned into a boutique hotel. And it has implications that end up displacing our neighbors. And I'm very concerned about the north, the northeast inner loop infill because that community that was redlined and it was cut in half, they've reformed. Right? And now we're doing the same exact thing, except, you know, now we're pushing them out through pricing. Because, you know, what we could be doing is ensuring that everyone who lives there has an opportunity to own their home, that they have current options to, to stay in the neighborhood. But without that, the new development will raise prices and push out those long-term residents who were hurt the first time and they're going to be hurt again.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, revitalization has got to include everybody. And as I mentioned earlier, what I want for Rochester residents is the same thing that I want for my own kids. I want opportunity. I want people who may have been on the lower side of the economic spectrum to have a shot to move up. And when we invest in downtown, when we invest in the, the first fill-in of the inner loop. We've got to find a way to get more Rochesterians to participate. And I would use the refurbishment and modernization of the city school district with a lot of union jobs. And we did not really make a strong effort to bring Rochester's city school district graduates into the workforce to do that modernization that's still going on. So whether it's the construction piece or whether it's connecting current residents through workforce development programs to jobs that will let them afford slightly higher rents, I think they can participate in the revitalization in the second half of the inner loop.
Thank you. Here is a question from the audience. In some sections of the city, there is food available, but little of it is healthy. To get fresh vegetables and fruit, you have to have a car to take or, or take long bus rides. What do you think the city can do to improve access to affordable, healthy food? Paul, you go first.
I'm so glad that that question was asked because that, it, it, it should prey on everybody's mind. We want, we've got to level the playing field in healthy food, healthy nutritious food for all residents, elderly, middle-aged children, the, the whole gamut i- is critical. And that really brings a question out of what is the responsibility of government? And, and how does the city? Can the city, I think it can, again, get to that point of walking and chewing gum. There, there are ways in which we need to develop either an economic incentive for business, for businesses to offer this kind of food. And, or we've got to subsidize as a government, a way to make a mandate that some sort of healthy option is available, especially again, because of the transportation issues. Too many of the city of Rochester residents do not have the luxury of a car. And so they're unable, like their suburban peers, to go to whatever supermarket may be convenient. And so the, the simplest solution has to take that into account. And there's got to be a way for the city of Rochester to help either subsidize or encourage businesses to offer a minimum standard of healthy food.
Thank you. Mary.
Yeah, I was really inspired. There was a city, I can't remember which one, but we, we talked about it on council, a city that actually opened a municipal grocery store. You know, and when the motive isn't to make profit, whether it's municipally owned or a nonprofit, the motive is just to provide healthy food and to provide a few jobs, it becomes more economically viable. I also think that we need to make it easier to garden. We recently extended garden permits from three years to five years so people could be feel reliably reassured that their garden that they put all this time into wouldn't be destroyed. Unfortunately, that has happened a few times, but I, and right now we have one community garden that's thriving and we're not allowing them to put a food stand on their, on their property and they have for years and it's been really utilized by the neighborhood. So we have to stop putting barriers for people to provide for their own needs and, and, and grow their own food.
Thank you. Another question from the attendees. You both live near one of the bicycle boulevards. Do you support the bicycle boulevards program? Mary.
Yes, absolutely. I will say that our network is pretty expansive, but there are big gaps where, you know, we, we have, you know, you can ride your bike and then all of a sudden there's nothing there for you. That's a safe way to, to get across to the other side. So I, I'm really advocating that we close those gaps and have a really connected and robust bicycle boulevard and protected bike lane. And that our system is going to enable people to safely get where they need to go.
Great. Paul.
Yeah, so I live on Gerson Avenue, three blocks north of East High School, and it's one of the streets that now has the medians in the middle that slow traffic so that bikes have dedicated space. And my personal experience biking around Rochester, several summers I've worked at the University of Rochester. So I've biked for, and I have typically biked from my house over to the U of R. And I think the more that we can create usable bike lanes and the more, and what I would like to see is more Rochesterians out biking as evidence that these lanes are, are being put to good use. I certainly support bikeability and walkability. And I think this has been a smart investment and I'd like to see more of it. And I'd like to see more people out biking, especially in the summers than, than I have going up and down my street.
Great, thank you. Here's another question from the attendees. Interesting question, should neighbors have the right to buy a neighboring property?
I'm guessing that like a collective, a group of neighbors. I, I, well, whether it's a neighbor or a group of neighbors that want to buy a neighboring property, I think that falls within the rules of, of, of American business and government. I know that there are people who want to invest in their neighborhood and their streets. And so I would imagine that especially a landlord or a group of landlords that are contiguous to the property or nearby are going to be able to give it the attention and any repairs that may need to be made. They are going to be more invested than an LLC, certainly from an LLC that would be out of state, which is, you know, certainly something that, that we are facing because our properties are so much cheaper than properties across the country. So, yeah, I'm, I'm all in for neighborhoods or neighbors joining together. And as long as they follow the same rules as other landlords and are able to maintain properties at a high standard that you would want your children or your parents to rent in. Yes.
Mary.
I guess I, I want clarification if you're meaning the grassy lot next door or a property that's like on foreclosure. I would say in both of those cases, yes, we, we do have a policy right now where a neighbor can purchase the lot next door for a dollar. But if the city is kind of holding on to it to think maybe they'll build housing someday, then it, it becomes a lot more difficult. But I do think that neighbors have a vested interest to make sure the properties are taken care of. You know, we had a house next door to us a couple of years ago that had been vacant for eight years. And it went up on the foreclosure list. And, you know, I really thought we should prioritize neighbors if they'd like to buy it to, for a second income property, you know, that helps the family and it also helps the neighborhood. And, and they've been looking into the rules around how we can prioritize neighbors and how we can prioritize folks who are looking to be owner occupants.
Paul, I'll give you the answer to that one. So Mary gets the next question. This is a League of Women vote a question, two parts. Do you think the city council and the mayor work well together? And what about the city and the county?
Well, I can start with the city and the county. I think they are working better together than they have in a really long time. The mayor and the county executive are very good friends. And I think before it's, it had been very challenging, though I think the legislature, there, there's still some issues there. But city council and the mayor is something that I have done a lot of research on. And what I found is that we were formed in 1986 and we used to have a city manager that was controlled by the city council, sort of like the superintendent. But when we went to an elected mayor, the city council never really became that strong independent branch of government that I think we were meant to be. And we never staffed appropriately to give ourselves that expertise and capacity. And so the way city council members get things done is through partnership with the mayor. However, if you are, if you ask too many questions or if you oppose the mayor's policies, then you jeopardize getting the things that you want done. And that's really a conflict of interest when your whole job is to be a check and balance on the executive branch. And so this council, you know, we, we successfully got some new staff and one of our biggest impediments is not having our own lawyer, which we are getting in June. And we have a lot more capacity and we're kind of stretching our legs and doing our own legislating, which we traditionally have just passed the mayor's legislation. So I'm looking forward to a stronger body in the future.
Paul.
Yeah. I, I've been disappointed that city council and the mayor have not been able to work as collaboratively in the last two years or so. I'm a strong believer that we have to work together. And I think that also spills over into what Mary was saying about the city council and, and county legislator. We're, we all want fundamentally the same things, but how we get there, we're all going to have different paths, but we've got to find common ground and move forward. And we're, we are elected to make the best choices that are available to us at a given time. And yes, there's going to be contentious issues. And yes, there'll be disagreements, but fundamentally, city council has nine members and five or more collaborate with the mayor on any given decision. And we've got to be looked at as a governing body that can listen to the voters, listen to the residents and work together to move the city forward.
Thank you. And next question, what do you think about proposals to take over the functions of RG&E and put them under public auspices? Paul.
That's a really complex issue that I, I think the DNC ought to do a really in-depth article. Because when the, when RG&E was sold off and it became a private entity, there was an exchange of funds at that point. And to, to re municipalize that is, is a very complex financial transaction with, if you were to just ask me municipal versus private ownership of utilities, I would say a municipally owned is better because you can look at it in terms of long-term investments and profit. Whereas private ownership is more driven by short term. But I'm not sure that we can easily as a community, whether it's the city or the county or a collection of counties, because RG&E serves such a big geographic region. How do we assume the control of RG&E in a way that doesn't mean that the Iberdola doesn't run away with all the profits without having any of the liabilities? And so that's a long answer. And I, I think it's a very complex issue. I think it needs to be studied. And I think Monroe County Legislature, because it serves county residents and city folk pay county taxes, it should be funded by the county government.
And Mary.
Actually, RG&E was always private. It was never municipal, but I think that a publicly owned utility is going to be more accountable to the people than a private organization that is driven by profit. A utility that is owned by the people and is has our interest in the common good, is going to make investments in our infrastructure, get us more on the path to renewable energy. And ultimately we'll get to keep the profits and lower rates for our residents. Municipalities that have a public utility are quite a bit cheaper on average. And this isn't something that the city officials are going to run. This is something that would be an elected or however they are appointed board of energy professionals that know what they're doing. We're not switching over employees. We would keep the same employees, but ultimately what we're being asked to do is to fund an implementation study to even understand how this would work. Because we don't know right now. And so I'm in full support of that.
Thank you. So at this point, normally I would say we're going to take our last question, but I'm going to do two more questions. Because there's an interest in our audience on two topics that we touched on earlier. One is mental health and one is housing. So I'll start with the mental health question from the audience. What plans or ideas do you have to provide more effective mental health or social emotional services? Mary.
Typically, mental health is something that is dealt with at the county level, but the city has taken it on with the person in crisis team. And I think that we really need to expand that response so that when folks in our community are calling 911 or 211 wanting help, that they're not getting harmed in the process. And we need to expand to more call types to, to handle things like homelessness and you know, public drunkenness, things that you wouldn't necessarily think are mental health related, but often have that component. And, you know, I know that the city council doesn't have anything to do with the school district. However, we do have rec centers and other avenues where we interact with children. And we did just, I think it was a million or $2 million that we gave to Center for Youth to provide social emotional services in our rec, in our rec centers. But one of the questions is, you know, how are the kids getting there? There's no current transportation from school to the rec center. How could we facilitate that? And whatever we're investing in, in that right now is a drop in the bucket and it needs to be a whole lot more because the crisis is very urgent and the need is, is very big.
Thank you. Paul.
Yeah, I think that, to echo what, what Mary said is that there is a, a series of agencies in the city of Rochester and it's a county-wide problem. And as, this is, I think, a great place where city government, county government needs to work with agencies and hospitals. And especially anybody that's working with the homeless, because the homeless really is disproportionately mentally impacted by mental health issues. And if we can deal with homelessness throughout the city, throughout the county, and we can work together, both layers of government and all the existing agencies, we should have enough existing infrastructure that if we deploy it smartly, we can make a much bigger impact than we currently are.
Thank you. And here's the last question also from the audience, this one with housing, as I said. Do you feel there is enough housing? It seems that the housing stock is low, which drives up costs. And probably a follow-up question or related question is what would you do to improve it? The, that circumstance. Paul.
So I would say that housing stock in the city is limited by the existing available land and that in my career at East High School in the past 22 years, it has become far more high demand and in my neighborhood is a great example, where people who weren't considering moving into the city now are. And so it's a, we're, we're competing with is what, what is traditionally a good, a good thought. More people want to move to the city and they're considering buying homes here. But that's driving up the, the price of, of homes. And so it really, again, I'm going to, I'm going to fall back to my And so it really, again, I'm going to, I'm going to fall back to my um, core message of, we've got to find a way to connect people to jobs that allow them to choose where they want to live. And that can't, that's not a blanket statement. It, it is not as though everybody who goes to work is going to get the same pay as e- everyone else. But we've, as a city government, what role the city can play is in helping people climb the career ladder or the jobs ladder or the union ladder so that as they uh, consider renting or buying a home, they have the means to compete with everyone else who's trying to live in the city.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, we, we absolutely have a vacancy emergency. Anyone who's trying to find an apartment on Craigslist right now could tell you that. It's extremely hard to find uh, an apartment, let alone one that you can afford. I think we need to increase the um, supply of affordable housing, and that needs to be done in many different ways. Uh, you know, building more affordable housing, allowing accessory dwelling units uh, like in garages on, on people's existing uh, space. You know, we actually do have lots of space in Rochester that's vacant. Uh, lots of demolitions happen every year. You know, we, we could be partnering more with Habitat for Humanity to build more housing. Um, but ultimately, we have to keep people where they're at. Um, if, if we kept everyone, you know, in, in stable housing, uh, we, we wouldn't have this uh, changeover where folks are getting evicted and they're looking for a new place. Um, thousands of evictions are, are just waiting to happen, and we're really on the tip of the iceberg here with this crisis. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So that completes the question and answer portion of our program. We now go to closing statements. Each candidate has two minutes. We go in the same order as uh, they gave opening statements, which is alphabetical. So we begin with Paul Conroy. Paul, take it away.
All right. Um, so I, I am excited to run for city council. I'm a, as a teacher, uh, one of my colleagues came by and said, you know, Mr. Conroy, you're, you're a dreamer and you're a doer. And uh, you know, night, in two thousand eight, I had an eighth grader who needed glasses. I figured out that he needed them to see the board. And uh, it took him a couple of months before he came to school with his first pair of glasses. And I was glad for the student, but I was really upset that the system took months to get the student the glasses. So I said, you know, we ought to have a program where kids make glasses for kids. And so this pair of glasses was made by uh, students down the hall at East High School. Uh, we make about a thousand pairs a year. It's run by my colleague Logan Newman. Um, so it's a sister program with my precision optics program. I know that dozens of East High graduates have received a good enough education at East High in my optics program and in Logan's, to go out and get the types of jobs that will allow them to live next door to my children, also East High graduates. I've got a tenth grader there right now. Um, I'm intensely invested in the city of Rochester. I want to see every resident be part of its growth and its success. I believe that there is enough, if we invest in Rochester's people, its parks and its places, that includes neighborhoods, it includes downtown. It includes every facet of Rochester. If we don't invest, we get no return and no risk. But that is not what I've learned at East High. A big dream can happen if you're willing to take little steps and see progress day by day, meeting by meeting. And it starts with being collaborative, collaborative with business leaders, collaborative with government leaders, and being collaborative with school leaders. And I can do all three of those things, and that's how I've created the programs at East that I have.
Mary?
Um, one of the things that I, one of my characteristics is that when I see a gap that needs to be filled, uh, I figure out a way to fill it, you know, whether it's at school twenty-eight where, you know, I, I coming back after the, the COVID pandemic, um, doing not a lot more for these kids than we did before was a huge disservice. And at our school, you know, we uh, we lost our connection with the me- mental health clinic, and so I successfully brought that connection back this year, and I'm working with um, probably five or six different um, organizations to wrap supports around our children. Uh, when I came into office, you know, I, I noticed uh, after George Floyd that our community was asking us to provide a different response for mental health, and so I used my network to connect with cities across the country and learned from programs that were providing the support and worked with our uh, administration to create the person in crisis team. And when our violence started to rise, again, I looked to my network and found Advanced Peace in California. We brought them here. I worked with the administration to implement that program. We just successfully graduated our first cohort, and the stories were incredible. Guys who'd been sh- shot thirteen times, now getting custody of their kids, starting businesses, getting their own apartments, truly transformative in just nine months. And that's the kind of uh, intervention, the kind of innovative solutions that we need to be spending our money on um, that really get at the critical needs of our, our youth and their families. Um, rather than investing in downtown infrastructure uh, to, to spur this economic development that might eventually trickle down to our neighborhoods. Um, you know, our children don't have time to wait for the promise of this trickle of investment. We need to invest directly in our people. And then the benefits ripple out. I firmly believe that in order for Rochester to truly prosper, we have to prioritize our people. That's how we will build back our great city.
Thank you, and thank you to both candidates for great discussion of the issues, Paul Conroy and Mary Lupien. Both Democratic candidates for, in the Democratic primary for city council Eastern District. Also, I want to thank all of the attendees who joined us this evening and proposing some great probing questions. And with that, I will turn the program back to Barbara G- Grash.
Hi, I want to add my thanks to those of Karen, to both of you for coming out tonight. Not every person we invite to debate answers in the affirmative, and we appreciate your willingness to subject yourself uh, and to engage. Uh, so, yes, we have some slides coming up here. We have more forums coming up for other seats, and you can find information about those other forums on our League of Women's Voter Women Voters website, that's LWV hyphen RMA dot org. Uh, if you haven't prepared for voting, it's time to do that. Voter registration is open until, I think, June seventeenth this year. So if you uh, have moved since the last time you voted, you should re-register. If you want to vote absentee, you need to apply in advance. Early voting opens on June seventeenth, and you can get all the details about where and when on the Monroe County Board of Elections website. And then the election is on January, uh, sorry, June twenty-seventh uh, at your assigned polling locations. Uh, s- soon, the league will be opening our annual um, voter, online voter guide at vote four-one-one dot org. It's not quite open yet, so don't go there tonight. But in the next week or two, it should be opening up. Um, this, this uh, forum was recorded and it will be posted on the league's YouTube site, which you can find from our website as well. So once again, thanks to all of you for coming out tonight.